All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to thank you for coming to our meeting tonight, our February meeting of the Board of Mayor and Alderman. My name is Mayor Barry Aiken. On behalf of the Board of Alderman and our Town of Etoka staff, again, I'd like to welcome you here. We just appreciate each of you taking your time out of your busy schedules to see how your town government works. When you came into the room tonight, there are two sheets. One of them is, I call it the attendance sheet. If, like we do, you get back in touch with you for anything, or gives you a place to put your name, your address on there. The other sheet at the top says public comments. If there's anything you wish to address with the board this evening, I encourage you in the next few minutes to, if you haven't, go sign that public comment sheet. They'll bring that to me. When your name is called, I ask you to come up to the podium and give us your name and your address. You want to make sure you are an Etoka citizen. We'll give you two minutes to state whatever comments you may have to the board. I would ask that you would direct your questions to me. There might be an Alderman that would like to answer, or we might ask town staff to give a reply. But after that two minutes is over and we are finished with our public comment section, we will proceed with the rest of the agenda for tonight's meeting. That public comment period is your only time that you can address the board. So, that being said, again, we welcome and we are so glad you're here. For those in attendance, one thing we do here with our Etoka meetings is we always open with a word of prayer and our pledge allegiance to the flag. I have asked Jay Gerald to come up to the podium, sir. Jay is an associate pastor of Gabriel Baptist Church. Jay is going to open us with a prayer, then we're going to do our pledge allegiance. For those that wish to participate at this time, please rise. Mr. Jay, tell yours.
Let us pray. Sovereign Lord, we remind ourselves tonight that you and you alone rule over all your Everything that you've spoken into being, Lord, you control and you rule over it. Your word tells us that all authority that exists here on earth exists because you say so. And you tell us in your word that our civic authority also exists because you decree it to be so. So, Father, for our mayor tonight, for our Board of Aldermen, we pray. They are, according to your word, your representatives here on earth. They do not wield their authority for nothing. And we, especially as Christians, also as good citizens, submit to their authority and to their leadership. Father, thank you for these representatives. Thank you for the time that they invest in this job, in leading this town. We pray for them tonight, Lord. We pray for your spirit of wisdom, your spirit of discernment upon them as they discuss things, as they make decisions. Father, may this town be blessed first by you. May we also be blessed by their leadership and the direction that they provide. Lord, we lift these things to you. You are the one who hears and you are the one who can answer. And we lift these requests to you in the name of your Son, our Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is Tuesday, February 18th. I have the time at 7:04 PM. And I would ask for our deputy town reporter, Ms. Rachel, would you take roll call, please?
Hi, Barry Aiken.
Here.
Alderman Lightsie.
Brother.
Alderman Deechy.
Here.
Alderman Harbor.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
And Alderman Giannini and Alderman Cool are opposite.
Thank you, ma'am. We do have a quorum. Our charter states that we must have at least four Aldermen to conduct business. We have a form to do that this evening. So, we will proceed with our public comment period. Item three on your agenda, excuse me, your agenda. And I have Mr. Henry Suter. Mr. Henry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Henry Suter, 37, Etoka. First, I do note on the agenda Exhibit J, talking about an earlier start. I do not know all the background that went into it. I would just offer that there have been times. Our scout meeting also starts at seven. I've gotten home from work just enough time to grab my scout shirt and a quick sandwich of something and get just to be at the meeting on time. Moving even a half hour earlier may have a negative impact on public ability to comment. Item two, consider a lessons learned. I made a comment to Mr. Warner at the safe room when we were securing from the tornado. Sometimes things go right by accident. So, those that were here, offer some thoughts, things they thought that went well, things that they felt could be done better. Doesn't have to be formal, but try to collect that input while it's available. Thank you.
That's a good point, Mr. Henry. I've also, I've had people just kind of the opposite as far as the time. And they, they actually would prefer it to be even earlier at six. And their thought was, hey, I can come right from work. I can join this, you know, participate. But very much understand what you're saying. Yes, sir. Right. We have our second. We have Mr. Josh Price. Mr. Josh.
Evening, Mayor, Alderman. This is regarding Exhibit A miscellaneous items. Actually, sorry, Josh Price, 191 Kingston here. There's a number eight. Alderman Deechy inquired about going to iPads instead of using printed packets.
Yes, sir.
Would that be for, I wasn't here for that. So, would that be for you guys or would that be for people coming in? Was a question, I guess. And then, what's the purpose? Because you guys have computer screens there. And then, this is available on your phone for download. So.
I believe, I would, if I mistake this, Alderman Deechy to respond. It was, it was for the board and, like tonight, and this is, this is probably average, maybe every one of us has one of these packets. And it's not only saving the cost of the printing, the time and printing and the paper and everything, but we can also, you know, if somebody brings up something, let's say, about an address on their street or something, we would be able to maybe get on those iPads and do that. But Alderman Deechy, Alderman.
Yes, sir. Great question. So, one, Mayor, hit it right ahead. I think this is an obligation, which makes me sit my stomach, because we print this out for every one of us every meeting. And then, I go home and I have a box full of them. This electronic, yes, we have the monitor to read this here. However, if we use, sorry, using SurePoint and software we have available to us, it's a lot more efficient. You can put notes, you can share ideas. It's just, I hate this. This is killing the environment.
I guess my, my thought reading this as a taxpayer out here is that you want to buy, you want to buy iPads for everyone here that are, there's upkeep, there's updates, you know, right for those. I don't know, I retired from the Navy as an IT. I maintain those for the nation for recruiting. It's a nightmare. I know it's only seven of them, right? And whatever you have on hand for, I'm sure they'll have some, there'll be others for the staff, right? It would, there's more constitution ways, plus you have the monitors and everyone has a phone in their hand. So, that would be, that was my first thought looking into that. And that was just, you know, my notes on here.
Town staff, most all of them already using iPads. And we've seen the efficiency go up, I'd say, magnitudes as far as some of the stuff that they used to.
Sure.
Have to have, you know, different monitors. Now they can just immediately respond to things. So.
I understand, I understand other factors. I'm just, that's my, my thoughts on that.
Thank you, Mr. Josh. Appreciate it. Yes, sir.
I was going to provide an updated miscellaneous items, but since a gentleman brought it up, those, the iPads, we have several iPads that have been retired and the purpose being for the board to be able to use those. They would not need a data connection. They could use the Wi-Fi here at Town Hall. I'm sure that you all have Wi-Fi connections at, at home. So, to maybe address the question about the, the cost, it should be little to no cost other than making sure the appropriate software is loaded on there. We already have licensing for each of you as you have your, your emails. But we're, we're going through a process now to make sure that all the, the iPads are, excuse me, functional, batteries are lasting, and that they have all the proper updates. So, should have something for you at the next meeting.
Thank you, sir. That is the, Mr. Josh was our last person on our public comment period. We will move forward with our agenda. Item four is our consent agenda. And as for those of you that might have a copy, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will generally be enacted by one motion. Except for any items that are removed from the consent agenda, there will be no separate discussion of the items at this time. So, the board has looked over every one of these items. We had a gentleman one time that wanted to know why we were lumping all these together. We used to, it used to take a lot longer, but we're, we're not shortening any of the deliberation, well, not that's the wrong word, but the consideration of the board. They've looked at all of the minutes and, and the finances and things like that. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion for items A through H in our consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda? Yes, sir. I have a motion by Alderman Harbor. I have a second by Alderman Deechy. Any discussion?
I don't need to pull anything. I just want to say a couple of things. I am encouraged to see our sales tax revenue continuing to trend. I'm also very encouraged to see the sewer fund this month.
Very good observation. We communicated in, in the past, because it, since the beginning of fiscal year, it had been running in the negative. And we communicated that due to the expenses of the upgrade projects of all the sewer funds, we were waiting for that big reimbursement check. So, that's why we ran negative for so long and had reimbursed, that over $300,000 reimbursement, $300,000 reimbursement came in and moved us to the right side of the ledger.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That goes into as presented. Item five on our agenda this evening, old business. We have a discussion of a pending town recorder vacancy. For those of y'all that may not have been watching or, or at the meeting last month, Alderman Cool made a motion and the board approved a table, or excuse me, postponing that he wanted to do some research and for this meeting. So, since he did, his motion said that we would pick this back up at this meeting. We can include it as the item that you see in front of you. Alderman Cool was not able to be here tonight. The board has been given a statement from him that he has done with his, what he was concerned about, and he encourages us to move forward with this vote at this time. So, I would entertain a motion. And this motion would be to promote Rachel Corverrubius, the deputy town recorder, to the town recorder position upon the retirement of Debbie Pickard, our current town recorder. So, kind of stated, sorry about that. Okay. So, I have a motion from Alderman Harbor, as stated. Do I have a second? Second. I have a second by Alderman Schaefer. Any discussion, questions?
My only discussion would be any thoughts on before we immediately put out the, the intention of hiring the deputy recorder. We knew this Debbie's, and we didn't know when. We knew at some point it was coming and we didn't want to be, you know, there are several things that the recorder position only does once a year. So, it, sometimes it takes several times. I don't envision you announcing a retirement notice anytime soon. But I, I would like to postpone the, the placement of the replacement of the deputy recorder position until we have our, at least our first budget workshop.
Good point. Yep, good point. Anybody else? All right. Hearing no further discussion, we do have a motion. We do have a second. Did you get those?
Yes, sir.
All right. All in favor of the motion to promote Rachel Corverrubius as the new Etoka town recorder, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Rachel. And just a side note, Ms. Pickard will, official day is March 14th, I believe, and we will be recognizing her at next month's meeting as her service of the town. Item six on our agenda tonight, new business. We have item six A, a presentation of former board member, recognition of Mr. Danny Feldmayer. And Danny called and informed us that he was not going to be here this evening. So, we will do that next month also with the recognition of him. Item six B. Do you need a motion to postpone that? Do I need a motion to postpone that, Attorney? Okay, we're good. All right. I get to do some neat mayor stuff. I'm going to ask, we've got Chief Scott and we've got some firefighters we would like to bring up here. Come on.
Hunter Elmore.
Come on, Austin.
And Austin Ellis. Before I bring in, I'm going to get up here in this spot.
Chief, you go right ahead.
All right. Before I bring in their families, Hunter Elmore joined the fire department in March of last year as a volunteer, as one of our reserves. And one of the things that we wanted to do with this program was utilize it as part of our recruitment for our fire department for our full-time. And he's one of the many examples that we currently have today working for our fire department that has come up through the volunteer ranks to a full-time position. In November, he was actually hired as a full-time firefighter for the Town of Etoka. And during his time as volunteer, he excelled extremely well in his studies and he still continues to do that under the tutelage of Captain Kenny. Captain Kenny, if you would come up and join him as you. And then, Austin Ellis, here to my right, he came to us in December from Memphis Fire Department. He spent five years working for Memphis. He's also a member of the National Guard.
Was.
Was a, a member of the National Guard. But in his time that he's been with us, he's been extremely valuable to have, bringing experience to our department because we have such a young department. And both gentlemen have done just extremely well and it's made all of us proud with the department itself. Hunter has his parents and his girlfriend. Mr. and Mrs. Elmore, if you'll join us, as well as young me, if you'll go ahead and join us.
If you like me.
If you would raise your right hand, place your left hand on the Bible. And we're going to give you the Etoka firefighters oath of office. All right. I state your name.
I, Hunter Austin Ellis.
Do hereby pledge.
Do hereby pledge.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The law of the state of Tennessee.
The law of the state of Tennessee.
And the laws and ordinances of the Town of Etoka.
And the laws and ordinances of the Town of Etoka.
As a firefighter, I further pledge.
As a firefighter, I further pledge.
To protect and safeguard.
To protect and safeguard.
The lives and property of the citizens of the Town of Etoka.
The lives and properties of the citizens of the Town of Etoka.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I recognize with this badge.
I recognize with this badge.
The symbol of my position.
The symbol of my position.
And the public faith and trust placed upon me.
And the public faith and trust placed upon me.
That I will never tarnish it.
That I will never tarnish it.
And I accept this badge.
And I accept this badge.
And the proud tradition.
And the proud tradition.
And honorable service that go with it.
And honorable service that go with it.
And are placed upon me as an Etoka Fire Department firefighter.
And are placed upon me as an Etoka Fire Department.
So help firefighter. So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Congratulations.
Well, I spent five years with Memphis and let's just say, coming up here to the Town of Etoka is a very welcome change from what I'm used to.
Awesome. Mr. Hunter? You don't have to.
I'll take a pass.
Okay. All right. Would the board like to shake their hands? Sure. All right, Mr. Dorothy, how do you want the pictures? Who's doing the pictures?
Oh, I can do the formal ones. I took a bunch there and.
So, we'll do one quick one of the four of us and then we'll do the individual with it. Mayor, the four of us?
No, you get over here. There we go now. Don't zoom in too close on my face now.
One, two, three, go.
All right. What else we need?
I can take group pictures. I'll send them to Bill and he'll pass them on to you.
Yep.
All right. One, two, three, go.
Come on.
Don't sit down.
Oh, sorry. Fail in here.
No, not indoors.
All right.
I'm glad I could clear it out.
All right. Item six C, ordinance and resolutions. We have an ordinance, Exhibit I, in your agenda. We have an ordinance amending our fiscal year '25 general fund budget. Mr. Town Administrator.
Yes, sir. First, first consideration of a budget amendment and it's pretty straightforward on what the budget amendment is. I likely recall that there was a donation request from an organization. It was after the budget was, was adopted and, excuse me, that this budget amendment includes that, that donation to that organization. So, just amends the budget, first consideration to make that adjustment formal. Likely we'll, we'll be back at some time before the end of the fiscal year to do another budget amendment for, for various departments as we, as we typically do. But this, in particular, is just for this one item.
All right. Entertained motion. Motion to approve, Mr. Jay. I have a motion from Alderman Schaefer. Do I have a second? Second. I have a second from Alderman Harbor. Any discussion? Hearing none. This is an ordinance, first reading. We will take a roll call vote on that. So, we'll start down to my right. Alderman Lightsie.
Yes.
Alderman Deechy.
Aye.
Alderman Harbor.
Yes.
Thank you for that loud response, Alderman Harbor. Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
All right. We have no nays on this, and so that ordinance is approved as far as personal. Mr. Town Administrator, item number two.
Item number two is sought of direction from the board. There was a desire to change the start time of the regular board meetings. Feedback was to change the meetings to 6:30 PM, so moving it up 30 minutes. That is what that ordinance says. Again, first consideration, this ordinance is to make that change.
Before we start, I do believe I made a mistake on the previous ordinance. It's got a J at the top. I believe this should be a. J twice. Get J twice. Okay. The ordinance itself is written. Have a brief. We need to redo that? Amend that motion to Exhibit I, Miss Counsel?
It'll be fine.
Okay. All, all the Aldermen understood what they were voting on, so.
And the town elected them.
Yeah, I think we're good. So, all right. Exhibit second J. Do you have a motion concerning Exhibit J in your pocket?
Motion to accept Exhibit J as written.
Okay. I have a motion by Alderman Deechy to approve. This would be changing the start time from 7:00 PM to 6:30 PM. Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Alderman Lightsie. Any other discussion?
Herb, is that still good for you in terms of being able to broadcast or cut?
All right. Hearing no further discussion, since this is the first reading of this, I don't, I don't think I did that last one. Any objection to reading this by Title Only?
No.
Hearing none, Mr. Recorder, Deputy Recorder.
An ordinance of the Town of Etoka, Tennessee, amending Section 1-101 of the Municipal Code to change the time of regular monthly meetings of the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
All right. We do have a motion. We do have a second. And since this is an ordinance, we'll do a roll call vote. Start over to my left. Start over to my left, Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman Harper.
Yes.
Alderman Deechy.
Yes.
Alderman Lightsey.
Yes.
All right, motion carries, first reading. Item number three, resolution, Mr. Town Administrator.
Yes, sir, this is a resolution to amend the check signers. This would basically replace Ms. Debbie Pickard as an authorized check signer and replace her with Ms. Rachel Cova-Rubius.
All right. This is, is there any objection? I'm going to use the resolution. Do I have a motion about this resolution?
Motion to approve exhibit K.
Second. Thank you, Alderman Harper, I have a second by Alderman Schaefer. Any discussions, questions about what we're voting on? Hearing none, all in favor of exhibit K in your packet, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is adopted. Item four, resolution, Mr. Administrator.
Yes, sir, this would be a resolution authorizing an employee credit card to Rachel Cova-Rubius, retiring reporter Debbie Pickard has a town-issued credit card, and this would, this would be the same for Ms. Rachel as she takes over the position on March fifteenth, same, same credit limit.
Okay. Chair would entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Alderman Schaefer. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Alderman Lightsey, any discussion?
Four thousand dollars now?
It has been restored.
Okay. Good question.
And I'll tell you what happens, though, is usually if there's a tight, a tight period of time where sometimes parts, you know, that she stayed up on her credit balance, that we'll, we'll utilize the other departments and just expense it as needed. So we really haven't had much issue with credit.
Yeah, I steal their balances a lot certain times in years. I, I'd like, can I borrow, wait, let me see how much is left on that one, let me see what I steal.
All right. Hearing no other discussion, all in favor of approving the employee credit card for Ms. Rachel Cova-Rubius, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution is approved. Item six D is in Delta, we have a bid award, Mr. Town Administrator.
Yes, sir, included in your packet is an amendment from our Public Works Director, Wesley Arbero. We received two bid submissions to replace the Main Street pump station and upgrade the Kern lift station. The bids came in as follows, A.V.E.S. Contracting at five million two hundred and twenty-five thousand, and Chris Hill Construction at six million forty-seven thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. The board had a work session prior to this meeting, answered any questions that the board had. Those bids are submitted for your consideration.
I'd entertain a motion for exhibit M in your packet concerning this bid award.
I would make a motion that we award the contract to Chris Hill Construction for six million seven thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars.
I have a motion by Alderman Harper, awarding to Chris Hill Construction, do I have a second?
Second.
Second to Alderman Schaefer. Any discussion?
Absolutely, I think that anybody in the audience is going, are you guys crazy? Basically, the, the purpose of our work session was to go over the pros and cons of both bids, and A.V.E.S. Contracting has never done a lift station anywhere near the size of the scope. They're a current engineering firm, they've got a great track record for engineering, but they have never installed a system anywhere even close to this, and I, we're also under, under a tight deadline with this being ARPA funds, it has to be spent by September of twenty twenty-six, and so we really don't have the leeway of getting in an unfamiliar contractor and then having to have somebody else come bail them out, and it's a lot of money, but for me, it's just too big a risk to go with somebody that, even if they've done something halfway, but they're not, they haven't done anywhere of the scope. They sound like a good firm, but I just, I just feel better with Chris Hill as well.
The town does have prior projects with Chris Hill Construction also. All right, any other, I didn't want to add anything at all. Okay. So we have a motion from Alderman Harper, who was the second? Over Schaefer, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of awarding bid to Chris Hill Construction, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved. Item six echo on your agenda this evening, we have an approval of settlement agreement. Mr. Town Administrator or Ms. Counsel would leave it.
This would be for the Board of Mayor and Alderman's consideration on resolving the outstanding lawsuit followed by Mr. Pelletier, framed, Pelletier versus Atoka. And we were able to present it to you in a work session so that you understood the details of it, and you were provided with the proposed item of settlement agreement. And so if you were to approve that, you would just need a motion and a second, and a vote.
Thank you, ma'am. As our counsel stated, we also had, we went into a legal session, the board has heard the details of this, and Chair would now entertain a motion about this.
I'll make a motion that we approve the post mediation settlement agreement as provided.
I have a motion by Alderman Harper, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Alderman Deechy. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the approval of the settlement agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved. Item seven on your agenda this evening is miscellaneous items. From the mayor, the board of Alderman, Town Administrator, I myself, do not have any miscellaneous items. I would open it up to the board.
The only thing I have is I would like to see, I would want to kind of hear the board's thoughts in terms of, for instance, on our town website, for anybody out of town that's kind of looking at us, like, should we do a job of, like, the crookery expansion or the recently approved apartment complex or the fuel center at the roundabout? In other words, to kind of let people know that, you know, things are happening here in Atoka and, and Brooklyn, so.
Through a current bid section?
Yeah, kind of a, you know, what's happening, what's happening.
Staff, we can, uh...
I don't know, it sounded like Alderman was looking for some comments.
Yeah.
No, I totally agree. So the idea, you know, Amanda and her team does a great job, the IDP out there reaching, but we want to continue to let the world know that Atoka is a great place to come, to live, to work, to start a business, and I think getting that word out there, we do a good job with the Facebook page, but not everybody has Facebook, and just continue to get the word out there every chance we can in every avenue, whether it's Facebook, our website, whatever. We need to let people know that Atoka is far better than Boston. Sorry to be careful.
But I think this would, I think this would be all avenues that we currently put stuff on.
So I don't think there's technically someone that is like, it's like their only job to do that. I've always offered to help to do that kind of stuff, but I'll be completely honest, in certain times when I'm in charge of it, I don't think of that kind of stuff, so if you just send an email to Mark and you go forward to me, like, hey, why don't you do, like, if you help me, I'll, it helps me remember to put stuff, stuff like that on. So, yeah, so there's a couple of us that all work together to try to make sure it stays updated. So my suggestion would be, sometimes that kind of stuff is just honestly not on my mind, since we have all other, it's not a little, a job by itself. But if there's stuff you want to see more current, definitely give us those, you know, I don't know the word I'm trying to use, those clues or, you know, input, and we can certainly make that happen.
I think it'd also be good if we do a board photo.
A what?
A whole, a photo of the board, had a photo of the board. We got ready to get to the board.
We're entertaining trying to get a U and a V M student as well, but I'm going to talk about that next week during budget as far as trying to get someone to come in and help get that more revived, up and booming.
Kind of like an intern.
Yes.
Yeah, Alderman Harper, I think you bring up a great point, something that we recognize as well. It, it can be very time-consuming to keep everything current, but we're, we're working on that.
Sure, and I'm not looking for something daily, you know what I mean, but like big things, you know?
Yeah, that's a great point.
Yeah. Anybody?
Yeah, I want to give a shout out to Mr. Suter, Kurt, I know there's a few off-duty Atoka police officers addressed the safe room this weekend, for anybody who doesn't know this building, as well as the north side of Atoka Elementary is a storm shelter that would be open in twenty twenty to watch. So thank you guys for stepping up on here.
Any other items from the board? Mr. Administrator?
Y'all may have heard a rumor that it may be snowing outside, so I'm going to keep it brief. Really just two things, letting you know that we've got our budget work session reminder for next Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, at six P.M. We'll be going over the budget and what the board's priorities are, and I'm optimistic that we can walk away as staff knowing what your clear directives are when we, when we leave that meeting. We've been meeting as staff and updating each of the department budgets and going through, going through the expenses and the revenues, and I think what we're going to bring in is still the needs of what we believe we still need, but then we've also made some, made some trimmings, if you will, to pare that down a bit, recognizing that, you know, from what I've heard from a few of you is that the objective would be to do as much as we can and not have to look at a tax increase for the upcoming budget. Don't want, know whether that'll be possible, but that will be further direction from you guys as, as we go through each of the departments. So that is six P.M. next Tuesday, and just to, for, some of you I think are aware that we're evaluating health insurance, medical insurance, dental vision, et cetera, options as part of a way to try to reduce some costs, still provide optimal and excellent coverage to our employees as far as options go. But we're probably going to be coming to you very soon about some, some options and going with a different broker. We've been with the state insurance carrier for, I don't know how long, years, and we can provide the same, the same insurance to the employees at a much lower cost by going with an outside broker. So, some of the other things that we're looking at are short and long-term disability, which we currently do not offer. Employees have to pay for Aflac on their own, so that is an option that they have there. But I think with the amount of savings that we're going to have with the medical insurance that dental and vision is going to be able to be enhanced along with short and long-term disability and increasing the life insurance coverage limits as well, I think it's going to be a significant savings for the budget this year. So, just as, just an awareness that, you know, when we start talking about it next week, hopefully, bids are due back soon. So I have more further information on that for you, that's all I've got for you.
Just to add to the Town Administrator, of course, I just want to make it totally clear to those that may be watching or those that are here, all of the meetings that we have are open to our citizens, they are advertised, work sessions. So, the only thing we do behind closed doors is when we have to meet with our legal counsel, so. We're very transparent with everything we do here in Atoka. If you don't have any other miscellaneous items, I would entertain a motion to adjourn by Alderman Harper, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lightsey. All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?